Okay, um, call the meeting to order. Any items from the public? If there aren't any, can I have a motion to approve the agenda with a modification of, to table the resolution in support of Voluntary Farmland Protection Act, and that will be on next week's agenda.
So move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign, oppose, motion carries. For this order of law. Any questions for Tracy?
Um, what was that thing from Mike Roberts?
That was the right-of-way modification for the road beside into Rooney Park in the valley.
Oh, okay. It said kind of what it was, but not totally. I was confused. I'm still confused, but sorry.
Uh, any other questions? Thank you, Tracy. Uh, internal budget revisions. Got four.
You do, sir. Um, the first one is from Clerk Petrucci, um, moving three thousand dollars from line item twenty-three to line item twenty in, uh, the project registration department. Um, the next are from Sheriff Blair, uh, moving five thousand dollars from line item two-twenty-one to two-twenty-three. Um, the second one is a thousand dollars from two-thirty-eight to two-thirty, all from law enforcement, excuse me, and the last one moving two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars from three-forty-one to two-twelve.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have change in status. A new hire recommendation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections, for Megan Bulke as a therapist with an annual salary of seventy thousand, one oh four, and that'd be effective March the eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Have a new hire recommendation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections, for Amy Bearman, or Bearman, as a DRC case manager with the annual salary of fifty thousand, six seventy-six, and that is effective on March the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Change in re-status, change in status received from Brian Ross, Community Development Director for Deborah Watt. She is going from a Combination Builder Inspector to Combination Builder Inspector Two with a salary increase from fifty-four thousand, nine twenty-five to sixty-two thousand, uh, effective March the first, two thousand and twenty-four. And we have a letter of resignation received, uh, from the Resource Recovery Resource Center for Catherine Morgan, and that is effective February the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Any other changes in status that you know? Is that it? Sure. And, uh, have approval of the minutes for February the sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, everyone was present, so we can leave them in, and then, um, on February the eighth, we'll pull these out, the commission president, or commission member, um, Mr. Barnhart was not present.
I have a correction on February the eighth.
Uh huh.
I know I wasn't there yet. I, on board meeting reports, I reported I attended the special CBB committee meeting. And of course, that was when H. D. Boyd did that, but it was listed as Commissioner Barnhart, so I'd like that corrected.
Instead of H. D. Boyd, it's H. D. Barnhart.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, hearing the corrections, can we go ahead and vote on the February the eighth minutes? Have a motion to approve with the correction?
Make a motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign, opposed, and one abstention?
One abstention.
Alrighty, so we'll leave the February sixth ones in there as we go through. Um, we removed them to item five, uh, revised holiday schedules, or is that yet to be determined still, or?
No, sir, if I could, um, we got a little excited. I can offer that it is very hard to determine exactly what days are holidays and what aren't. There, even at the state level, is published differently, so we made a mistake. The first mistake was on Wednesday, June the nineteenth, which is Juneteenth. Uh, the governor has not declared that. Uh, he has for the last two consecutive years, so we're asking you to remove that. Uh, we'll address it if the governor does, and then lastly, both December twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve, and December thirty-first, New Year's Eve, those are half-days, and we had them whole days. Again, if the governor declares, we'll come back at that point in time, so those three points of clarification, if you will.
Some people who are, maybe have a little bit of suffering going on, maybe think that every day is a holiday, so we are truly blessed that we are given these, uh, these days to spend with family, so. Alrighty, uh, let's see. Cancelled check requests, anything there from Clerk's Finance Office? And we have a stop payment, that's it? So I can have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda for February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Now, a second, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, opposed, motion carries. Alrighty, uh, correction of assessment logs, Mr. Hess. We have a little bit of workforce here to approve, disapprove, throw away, get rid of, what?
We got a few, yeah, we got a few. Good morning. Uh, what, what these are, most of them, uh, you know, we are scanning all of our personal property records so we can get rid of all that paperwork, and we've been doing that for the last couple of months, so a lot of these are cleanup stuff. As they went through scanning, they found that this was a mistake, need to be corrected, so, so a lot of these are that way. Uh, some of them are customers at the counter for the last week, but most of them are cleanup stuff. We're getting ready to lock our records and roll everything over to next year, so this is just the final cleanup.
Well, this Eva Bud, since cabin sold, isn't that real estate?
Well, it's personal property. It's a cabin on somebody else's land. Even though it's a house, it's considered personal property.
If they don't own the property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we got a total of twenty of them here. Uh, there's three pages of them. They're all personal property, uh, exonerations, uh, and the total amount, if you look at the total amount of all of them, is three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seven cents.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the, um, twenty exonerations for the?
Yes, you do.
Okay, have a motion?
You can say it's for thirty-four, twenty-nine, oh seven.
Have a motion, do I have a second? And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, opposed, motion carries.
Good, very good. Thank you, that's all I have.
Alrighty, do we have, uh, let's see, Board of Meeting Reports, Mr. H. D. Barnhart.
I don't have anything to report today. I have two, I have two, um, board meetings tonight, I have elaborate board and the museum board.
Okay.
Are we going to continue? No, one's an hour before the others, so I'll go from one right to the next one.
Okay, good for you. Mr. Jim Boyd.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Really confused the minutes up this time.
The only meeting I had was the Berkey County WU Extension Service Committee. Uh, they meet once a year, and I was there, and, uh, mostly it was, uh, uh, program, uh, reports by, uh, uh, Mike Luthrow and, uh, what was the lady's name? I can't remember her name. No, no, she's in, just a administrative assistant. Anyway, they gave a report, of course, Mike does everything but open the doors. Um, of course, the problem they have is Mary Beth Bennett's position. Um, it's gonna be vacant for at least six months, mostly due to West Virginia University reorganizing and not having their budget, et cetera, but there is a possibility of hiring a program assistant for a period of eighteen months with unexpended funds, because all unexpended funds by, uh, Extension Service by county is kept in the county, so they can use, make those funds available for this program assistant, so, uh, they'll probably seek that, and that, of course, will take six months to hire that person, and, uh, that was pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Catlett.
Yes, sir. Um, last Friday, Eddie and I met with a gubernatorial candidate, Chris Miller and his wife. Uh, Justin Henry brought him, brought them by, uh, to meet with us here at the office, and, uh, we had a very long conversation, and, um, you know, he, I will say this, I have him on, I don't have him on tape, but he quoted to say he would support the Wiltshire sales tax if he wins, so, it got our attention, so.
Sure.
But no, he's a very intelligent guy, and, uh, I thought it was a very impressive, uh.
Where's he from?
He's from the Huntington, and, uh, his mother is Carol Miller, who's a United States Congresswoman, uh, and, um, he owns thirteen car dealerships in several states other than West Virginia, Charlotte, North Carolina, being one location, um, but really sharp guy, um, and I, I truly think he understood, uh, he, he expressed to us how important our growth is to the whole state of West Virginia, and that we, they need to do more in Charleston to help us support that.
That is a good statement right there.
Yeah, so, very impressed.
I'm not sure about the car dealership business.
Uh, on Tuesday this past week, uh, I met with the sewer board. Um, they got quite a few pump stations they've been working on. If you travel Route Nine West, you, you see one there at Rumsey, you see one there at Hedgerstow High School, where, where our new, uh, bridge works going on in our little curb bypass around the bridge.
Big fancy pump.
And, and the one at Rumsey's actually finished, but they're waiting on Tom McAdes, and they get used to it, so, before they can get it running, so, and not anticipating that anytime soon.
Did they rebuild them, or?
Yeah, completely rebuilt on them and stuff, and upgrading them all, so.
And that's all part of the consent decree?
Yeah.
That they're still following?
Mm-hmm, and, uh, they, they're working hard. I, I, every day this winter, regardless of whether those people right there are working on those.
Yeah, they've been working pretty good on that.
Weather doesn't deter them at all, so.
What about the one there at, uh, what's that subdivision there off of?
Behind the church, Independent Bible?
No, uh, off of forty-five, it's in that subdivision.
Wildflower?
Yeah, Wildflower.
It's.
There's one there, it has.
Yeah, it's being worked on as well, yeah.
It's moving forward. I told you it's been a bad one there.
Yeah, it's being worked on as well, yeah. Uh, our stormwater meeting followed that, and, um, the interesting thing there, uh, as I discussed with y'all last week, I've been in touch with the West Virginia DEP about our stormwater permit, and we filed that, was legally, or not legally, but it was filed back in August of last year, and, so, I was promised back in November that they would probably have it ready by the end of January, and then when I inquired about it at the end of January, uh, we got mixed vibes down there, so finally, we hooked up with a guy named Yogi Shpatel, and, um, as I explained, they're working on an MS four statewide permit, and if that comes into being, then the need for us to have our own county permit will no longer, be moot, it'll no longer be needed, so. We would then, if they get the statewide permit, which they've talked about for a long time.
Yeah, but that.
If they get that, then you would register under that permit.
That strikes me as odd, because statewide permit, you know, the state's basically in two drainage basins, Potomac and.
And still, that's what they're shooting for, and that's the direction they're headed, okay? Uh, but they've been working on it for a while. Uh, the director. The director down there was Kathy Emery, who stepped down about a month ago, and she was replaced by Jeremy Vandy. We had a conference call during our stormwater board meeting with attorney Richard Lewis, who was in our presence here last year. He is really involved with the DEP and understands the whole complexion of it, and it is his take that he was, so, after my call, Yogi encouraged me to have Richard Lewis call him to get more detail, and Richard Lewis has spoken with them on multiple occasions now over the last few weeks. And he is being told that we possibly, by the end of this month, which is next week, they could possibly have this statewide permit, a draft of it. If that happens, then, like I said, with the pursuit of us, our individual county permit, we probably would just exhaust that effort at that point. If they don't get it done, the feel is we probably should push to have our county one done, but there's thoughts about that as well. If you push them to do it, and is that gonna come back and affect you? Are they gonna be harder on you than they need to be? I think the general feel is, if it's under a statewide permit, I know I feel this way, and I think most of people, that it would be better for us perhaps in having just a county permit. It's certainly gonna open up other counties. Right now, we're the only county in the state that has a county permit. There's several municipalities, of course, including Martinsburg, but everybody will fall under this. So, Richard's advice was, is that we wait and see what happens over the next few weeks. He'd say give them till the first of March, and then we'll see. And if things are moving forward, then we think the game plan at this point would be to wait and see if that statewide permit, there'll be a thirty-day period for appeals, there'll be a thirty-day period for this and that. So, guessing it possibly could be in place by March or June of this year, if that thing does go forward, so.
I wonder if they're looking at it being another branch or another arm of either DEP or EPA? Or would it be a sole, simplest, well, sole entity of its own?
Well, the permit would be handled through the West Virginia DEP.
Okay.
Under the auspices of the EPA, and hopefully, they can come in and say, well, we don't like this. But so far, though, they were the ones that encouraged us to become co-permittees with the Stormwater District, okay? And they are also the ones pushing for this statewide permit, the way I understand it. So, I think that's the direction it's going, and hopefully, it'll get done soon. In the meantime, the general feel is, we just leave things like it is here now until we get a new permit. And Yogi encouraged me, they said, well, you all can still change your ordinance and your fee structure and all. And the feel is, is the best thing to do is wait until we get a new permit. And when there is a new permit, it will take the non-growth areas out of our permit, okay? The original permit that we're working under now, it included the entire county.
Right.
And, of course, the controversy's been back Creek Valley, and when the new one becomes, gets in place at some point, hopefully, then that non-growth area will be taken out of our permit area, so.
Well, it makes me think, then, do we freeze anything that we've got going on here? Or just maintain the status quo?
Maintain status quo until then, yeah. That's the advice of the legal counsel, and just maintain status quo, so. And the only, I had an ambulance authority meeting this evening, but it got canceled due to a lack of a qual, apparently, there's too many members out of town, so. But that's all that I have. I'll keep you in tune with this stormwater situation, and hopefully, like I said, I think this thing, the new director is a guy named Jeremy Vandy, and I think he's gonna, what Richard understands, he's gonna push to get this done, where in the past, it's, they wouldn't place the blame on, whether it's the governor's office, or whether it's who and who, whatever, the legislature, but somebody has not been, for whatever, political reasons or whatever, didn't want this thing pursued. But now with the change of governorship, a change with coming on, now's the time to jump on this thing and hopefully get it resolved, so that's where we are.
Yeah, I'd like to hear more about it. I mean, just to see what, if it is taken over by statewide permit, then what are their intentions to do that we haven't done, or that we've done that they won't do anymore? That'd be my concern.
Well, it'll be interesting to see what happens to Montague County, Putnam County, some of the growth areas.
My take, Jim, is that those of us that have been involved are gonna be left alone, and then they're gonna, but there's gonna be, there's gonna be some more counties, Jefferson County in particular, probably, that's gonna be now expected to be part of this permit, so.
Counties generally won't be, because they have to have over a hundred thousand.
So, square box.
Urbanized area. That's why, because we only have a small municipality here, but it's on active accounting, you say you need to control pollution of the urbanized area, rather than municipalities where it would be everywhere else in the state.
Well, if that's a question of a hundred thousand, City of Martinsburg has to do it. So, they only have, what, seventeen thousand?
Municipality, treated differently.
Municipality with a.
Collection system.
With, in an urbanized area, it does, but in these counties, it's, there's different levels of MS four communities, but if we had a bunch of other municipalities here, they wouldn't say the whole county needs to do it. And really, they were only looking for the urbanized area in the beginning, but the county, back forty of us here, volunteered, said, well, we're gonna do the whole county and make it into the.
Well, that opens up another question about making more municipalities in Berkeley County.
Always worth the discussion.
Okay. Eddie?
Yes, sir. Had a meeting with Parks and Rec. Their director is engaged, he's busy, he's getting things accomplished, something we haven't seen for a while. He met with the YMCA this past week, and they're doing an analysis on the county and Jefferson County to see if it can support Aquatic Center. So, that's pretty interesting and exciting. He finally got the MOU complete. He's only been in office, we're in a position now for three weeks, but trying to get this accomplished for a while. Has a MOU established with the school board, waiting on the school board to sign off with the use of the Randy Smith Center. The Spring Mills Park, the trails are being pushed, the stormwater management is being built, and the paths for the pavilion and the bathroom are also being built on that ten-acre parcel there in Spring Mills. The gym floors at the Berkeley Two Thousand are being sanded, and they're working on renovations with the brick building, which Steve had discussed, you know, over his tenure there, about trying to make it part of the package with the barn for rentals, especially for weddings and whatnot. So, they're doing some renovations there to the bathrooms in particular, to make them nice. Rudy Park, Kelly Barges was there to represent a ball club, a travel club called Stingers. They've been working very closely with the Little League, as well as, I know Steve was involved in getting some things accomplished out there they've been working on for a while. They wanna build a pavilion slash batting cage, and do some other renovations there, which will come to about sixty-five thousand dollars. So, to me, it's just another great opportunity for partnerships, that everybody's got some, some skin in the game, and working towards making something really nice there.
Building the playground out there, been installed now?
Yes.
And in use, so.
Yeah, it's nice.
Heard a lot of nice things about it, people are happy about that.
Yeah, prices on a new roof for a Berkeley Two Thousand building, they range anywhere from like two-hundred-and-forty thousand to nine-hundred thousand. So, there's quite a swing there, but they've worked with this contractor, and they feel that he's, you know, making a living, not making a killing, so. Lambert Pool, renovations are still going on there, replacing all of the skimmer lines, and got it all torn up around there, and they're very confident that they'll be ready to go, and they'll be opening the pools for them this year, this, is it Magellan? The name of that company, Magellan?
No, Millennium.
Millennium. Millennium will be opening that pool, as well as War Memorial Pool this year, to help get everything up and running in a professional manner. So, that's about, got one.
Let's see progress on the pickleball courts there.
Soon as the weather breaks up, I'm hearing they're gonna get started on this.
And what about the Grapevine Road crossing? Is that still working, the trail?
It is, it's.
Chad met with them about a month ago now.
Correct. Two months.
You mean the railroad?
Yes, but we've kindled a relationship with the support of the new city manager in their RACE grant application. Andy's doing such a great job, and has reached out with an olive branch to say, hey, would you be opposed to us including that in their RACE grant application? So, going in at different directions.
As long as there's progress, you know.
It's about, it's going about as fast as it can, when you're talking about CSX.
To tie that in with Route Nine bike path is, you know, man, that's needed, it's bad.
It takes money.
I know, and.
And that's what this RACE thing's all about, hopefully, so. And it's something that we obviously don't have right now to spend on that trail, so.
Good.
Yeah.
I was, had two meetings on Monday that I was unable to attend because of the conflicting of the third one, so I had to pick and choose which one I went to. Went to Charleston and had a West Virginia Corp. or Riskpool Insurance Company meeting, which, while I was there, I went a day early, and went up to the Capitol Building and visited our delegation and our senators, and just, I mean, they have a tentative ear to what our needs are here. It's like everything else, it's, we gotta convince fifty-four other counties that we're not the same as they are, but anyway. But they were, they were busy. I mean, that is one buzzing building down there when session's in, so. Then, the Riskpool itself is in very good financial standing. We will probably be receiving a notice of a rebate on our premium in the next year, or within this period of time for our renewals. However, it's kind of bittersweet. In order to maintain the integrity of the system that we have for West Virginia Corp., there is gonna be an increase, but it's gonna be offset by the rebate. So, that will, that will take care of years that are of a bad risk year, as we, you know, instead of being hit with maybe a half a percent this year, and we have several bad years, not be a six or eight percent jump in our premium. So, we maintained it as a half, about a half a percent, I think, it's gonna be across the gamut of all the coverages that we have. But however, like I said, it should be offset by the rebate we're gonna get, so.
I do know one of your meetings, the planning commission, I hear, by secondhand, that there were a couple of public hearings, but no one commented about the public hearings. That's all secondhand.
Secondhand?
Secondhand.
Your secondhand, okay. And that, the firsthand would have been his lovely wife, Linda.
I was there, we were out of here by six weeks.
Really? Okay.
Alrighty, well, that's about all that I have. Move on to here. We have a reappointment, Board and Commission vacant, says we have a reappointment packet received from Clarence Martin for the Roundhouse Authority. His term expires March the eleventh. Can I have a motion to reappoint him, or is that okay, H.D.? Motion to reappoint Ken Martin to the Roundhouse Authority.
You want to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries, and we have an application received for Travis Bishop for the Eastern West Virginia Regional Airport Authority. Want to schedule him, Penny, to come in? And Eddie, you have an honorary commissioner here today.
We do.
Adelena?
Adelena.
Adelena, okay.
Which right-hand page? I am Adelena, of Egress. Do you swear the firm's?
I swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold. The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States.
Ah, we're special, we're the one in the state of West Virginia.
That I will work hard.
That I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
Which have been appointed.
Which have been appointed.
So, I don't think I.
Don't think I. Well, I go to Saint Joe's, and I excel in academics. I won't be afraid to say that. I like to read a lot. I find reading very interesting, and I also like to do theater. Theater is something that makes me happy, and it's something where I can be free in, it takes my mind to solve things. I love my school, I love learning. If there's like no homework on one day, I'm sad. I really, really love homework.
That's on you.
This is a rarity here, everybody.
I have three kids, and none of them like that.
But I will commend you for that, dear, that's for sure.
And I hope to go to Spring Mills. I really hope to go to Spring Mills and do AP classes, theater, maybe basketball, too.
Okay.
Have you done anything with Apollo?
No, I haven't.
They're doing good things over there, maybe you should stop by and see them.
They'll be, yeah, they've gone through a lot of renovations over there, and they're probably having a few things happening this year, so. Wouldn't be a bad thing to probably get some information on that. What's the contact, who's the contact down there?
They have a new lady in charge now.
Yeah.
Cummings. What's her name?
Mary, Mary Cummings.
Mary Cummings.
They do a lot of productions down there and different things, so if you really like the theater, it might be something to be involved in.
And they have, don't they have a website, too? Yeah. Okay, that'll keep you up to date, that's for sure. Well, thank you so much, and anytime you wanna ask a question, get ahold of Penny or H.D., and they'll get my attention, or just holler my name, and I'll turn the mic over to you.
Can I have a concern, though? Can I speak of a?
Sure, sure.
So, I have a concern about the upkeep and of damage of Berkeley County, due to there's many junkyards, many trash all over eleven, eighty-one, and I don't think it looks good on our image. It's turning away potential tourists, and the citizens of Berkeley County don't like it too much. And I believe that maybe like planting trees, or like putting fences around it, and cleaning up the trash around the road would potentially make it a more attractive and better county for us.
We do have a litter control body down here, that they do go out and do litter cleanup along roads. They can be entered, well, anybody can enter or request an area to be cleaned up. I think it's through the, it's through.
Solid Waste Authority?
And there's, you know, if you pick out a road that you see that the litter and things have picked up on.
Except for eighty-one.
Except for eighty-one. We are not allowed to be out on eighty-one for the cleanup, because it's a federal highway, and of course, the traffic and the dangers of it. But eighty-one does do their own cleanup out there most of the time, when, I guess, when they're not busy doing something else, but. And you're right, we get one chance to make a first impression to anybody new coming to here, and you're right, we can always do better, but we're struggling to keep up with what we do, so. Thank you so much.
Alrighty, let's see, week ten-twenty, I think we're a little bit early. We wanna go to, now we got.
We want to go to, now we've got executive sessions after that. Can we just take a little break? Let me take a break and we'll get some pictures of honorary commission person. And we'll have a little break until, what is it, 1020? Thank you. All righty, we're back in session and we have a bid opening.
For cleaning services.
For cleaning services.
For county buildings, yes, sir. You have certification to publication. It was advertised locally in the Journal as well as our social media and on our website. Just a little bit of background on this. Currently, we do cleaning for our buildings in-house. And it's a struggle to fill positions and keep positions filled. And as you, as everyone knows, your buildings are growing, you're getting ready to add some 20,000 square, almost 20,000 square feet to the David Port Center. You're adding on the old jail, you're adding space to this building. So, we stepped back and took a holistic look at what opportunities were for providing these things. And it was quickly identified, and Chad Weinrender deserves a lot of credit because he worked this from the onset, that there are companies out there that specialize just in this. These people are bonded, their background checked, they're in instances like our 901 Center Sheriff's Department, these are C just validated and approved employees. So, we're hoping along with this that there might be opportunity for cost savings, so we're anxious to hear what the final numbers turn out to be. But that's kind of where we are and you've received two bids.
What happens to the people we hired to do that?
So, the staff members that you have obviously would have opportunity to apply to the selected vendor. But if the commission chooses to do this, you would actually be eliminating the better part of seven and a half positions from payroll. But they obviously could apply to these companies since they would have history in the buildings.
It has here an annual price and then it has a breakdown of paper products.
So, how we designed it.
Want to read any of that or just the annual cost?
You could read them into record. So, we asked for annual cost based on the buildings and there were some à la carte items that we asked them to provide if they wanted to.
Wanted to, okay. Okay, the first one here is from Service Master Clean. Price proposal is $376,810. And then the à la carte parts of it are paper products, soap, trash can liners will be billed as a pass-through cost. We will inventory, order, and pay for products and invoice monthly for cost products and we will add a 5% to this service. Cost for stripping, refinishing of vinyl floors, 75 cents per square foot in office areas and 60 cents per square foot in corridors and lobbies. Cost for carpet extraction will be 20 cents per square foot for offices and 15 square foot in corridors and lobbies.
Awesome.
Awesome. Okay. And number two. I believe it's from Patent Services. Look on the front of the envelope, Mr. Wick. Is it on there?
Yeah.
Patent Building Services.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, it is. All right, we have a total price of $315,000 annual, first year. Patent Building Services, Chestnut Ridge Road, Morgantown. Service Master, I didn't give you the address on that, Penny. Do you need that address? There it is. 326 Independence Drive, Winchester, Virginia.
What's the average cost of the employees that we have now currently?
We have current costs of right around $525,000.
My next question, obligated or are we in a contract now for, say, cleaning supplies?
So, we competitively bid those as needed. So, there's opportunity here, Mr. Boyd. We asked them, in this instance, Service Master clearly believes they have a, they have an opportunity to buy and sell to us with their 5% markup, I think is the thought. They could be competitive on what we buy. There isn't, we told them upfront, you're welcome to propose that, but we're in the habit of buying it ourselves and using it just because of our ability to buy with the quantities we buy in the contracts we have access to. So, we'll see what looks best. So, I can tell you just.
So, we're not in a contract for that right now?
We are not. We are not, no, sir. Just hearing those numbers, it sounds like a very cost savings opportunity, but we still need to read through the five print and make sure every, so there was a mandatory pre-bid. Chad spent the better part of a day walking through every building with them, so they've seen it all.
And tracing.
And tracing, yes. There's no surprise that both these vendors were here, it was mandatory. There were actually six, and you have six that attended the pre-bid and now you have responses from two. And both numbers, to be honest with you, I expected them to land around 400. So, both of those are very good numbers in my mind, but.
Well, depending on what you see when you read over them.
Correct, correct. This, this again, we continue to turn over rocks to try and be very cost effective with the services provided. And two, it's difficult to keep staffing where it needs to be.
And what will happen to the existing staff again?
They obviously will have opportunity to make up because these people, when these large companies take on these contracts, they hire specifically to the contract, right? So, we clearly would give them recommendations and contacts to apply.
And we used to do this before.
You did?
And it was not cost effective.
It was not, you did it before at the local level.
Right.
These are both national vendors. These are not small companies.
Morgantown, their home offices.
Yeah.
So, that warrants looking at it again and by not being able to have employees, you know.
What would you have, a year contract with them?
You probably, this is, this is a five-year contract. You probably, this is a five-year contract, this is a five-year contract, obviously we have opt-out clauses.
There are opt-years in the contract.
Probably with escalators, we'll come back in and present it all to you in a summary.
And I assume they provide references on places you're working now.
Of course they will.
Follow-up on as well.
We will, yeah. Not something to be taken lightly. Anytime you involve your human capital and the folks that have been with you, this is just an effort to try and make sure we're doing the best we can with the funding that we have.
I guess there are some security concerns.
Well, there aren't. Everyone knows as part of this contract, they have to be bonded, they have to pass background checks. No different, well, it is different than ours because our people don't, we don't have background checks. So this escalates it above what we have now. So when it comes to background checks and knowing what you're getting, this is taking it to another level.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Well, there are certain advantages, you know, both ways. From the chemical side of the cleaning, I know these large corporations do a lot more training than what our staff probably gets with the different chemicals that they use, whether it be acostic type stuff or whatever. I just know from my past that a lot of times they find themselves in a bad spot because they weren't properly trained locally, so.
You mean like mixing bleach or something?
Yes, absolutely, or drain cleaner and that kind of stuff.
I would hope that our facilities group will be more in that tune of drain cleaning than our cleaning staff. I know they clean bowls and things, but that's, I would hope.
Drain cleaning, that'd be facilities.
They'd probably train more on how much of the stuff to use as well, so maybe less waste, hard to tell.
All righty, any other comments, questions?
I guess, is there a provision for special needs, like if carpet gets stained or something?
So part of the provision is there's a day porter in the contract, so there'll always be a person on-site during the day. And then the cleaning would be done after hours. So the model that we have now, your cleaning staff starts well before, even though it's not night, they start early and they leave early. So facilities ends up being the porter when they're absent. There's been a lot of time and effort and thought, even in the preparation of the RFP. But now that it's open and now we hear the numbers, to be honest with you, I'm excited to really dig deep into it. But go ahead, Dave, I'm sorry. I assure you that it will be reviewed in detail and we'll come back and stand on that side of the table and answer the questions and really get into the weeds about what's on the contract.
Yeah, because one of my things, one of the comment was the floor stripping and things, did I miss it or did only one company give their price?
That was the à la carte part.
I didn't hear Mr. Whitaker read it on the second vendor.
No, I didn't see it.
Might have been, we'd have to look and see, they were supposed to provide that. That wasn't mandatory because we can hire those services done if we want them outside.
People do that themselves right now?
We have the capability of doing that, we've bought some machines to do it.
Would it go into effect if we do it July 1st?
July 1 is the goal.
So if we own those machines, would it be beneficial to depend what the cost is at? I don't know how often we strip floors and do things to maybe keep one or two people on just for that position since we own the equipment? Versus paying the square footage because that could get expensive with a lot of square footage.
There's all kinds of options.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Executive session?
Yes, sir, for legal matters and personnel, no action to be taken.
Okay, can I have a motion to go in executive session for legal matters and personnel? Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. We are in executive session.
Okay, we're out of executive session and back in session. Any items from the public? No items from the public? There was no action to be taken in executive session also. Mr. Bernhardt?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. You know, I would really like to go into recess.
We are in recess. Thank you.